...and computers. And it was very hard to use those. They were inefficient. In a lot of ways, it was hard to use them in meaningful ways. And coming back now, in 2010, I see how much it has made a difference for our students and our teachers in the effectiveness and the use of technology in meaningful ways. So we're very excited and I'm very proud of this team for the work that they've done in this area. So I'm going to hand it over to Jamie Trudell. Oh, I'm sorry. And this is, I'm supposed to introduce us. Jamie Trudell.
Hi.
And Britt?
Santa Maria.
And over here, we have Chris Santa Maria. Lisa Albright. And Maria Cannon. And I'm going to turn it over to Jamie Trudell.
Great. Thank you. Oops. Of course, this is turned off. All right. I'm going to start off by talking about technology at LHS and kind of how we got here. I was fortunate enough to speak to the school board about almost two years ago now after we first had our Promethean boards installed and to talk about what technology was like then. And so to start off with, technology is huge. It's been funded in several different ways in our building. The first was second grade was through a lot of grants back then when we started bringing our Promethean boards and our active votes into the classroom. Since then, both Robyn and Charlie, Mr. Grossman and Mrs. Burdick, allocated as much as they could in terms of school funds, I think, really supporting the teachers' drive of technology in this building. And the other thing is professional development money. Teachers have really took it amongst themselves to go to conferences and workshops that encourage professional development in the area of technology in the classroom that sometimes involved bringing technology back into the classroom from those workshops. So tonight, we're going to talk to you about some different types of technologies. The first one right here is a netbook. The active board, which is what you're looking at right now. Some people call them a smartboard. It's kind of like a name brand. It is an interactive whiteboard. Ours are Promethean board here in this building. We're going to talk about document cameras, active votes, iPads, iPods. Flip cams are used, LCD projectors, and the active slate, which is what I'm working on right now. So the benefits of an interactive whiteboard. Why do we want these in the classrooms? Oops. We jumped. Pardon me. Student engagement. It's unbelievable how this board can change the engagement in the classroom in terms of the amount of time you can sustain lessons. Efficient lessons. It's all here. It's ready to go. You can move through a lesson in a really great pace because there's no wait time for students. Multimedia. We're able to provide media to these generation of learners that is really truly engaging to them. Teacher investment. It takes some time to make this stuff. And, you know, we're really invested in our curriculum and our content due to the time that we do spend on it. Sustains attention. Part of a 24th century classroom. We're preparing these learners to go into the 24th century of jobs, which is going to involve technology. Having all this technology at their fingertips and watching the teachers interact it is really going to encourage this. It meets different types of learning styles. An instant assessment tool. We're going to talk a little bit more about that as we talk about the active votes. And less paper used. Who can beat that? So let me show you some pictures of this happening. At a walk-through downstairs, K12, I took a picture in each grade level in terms of what was going on in technology in a moment at Little Harbor School. The first one is a picture of Mrs. Santa Maria in her classroom with her students. You can see her students on the rug, all of them, eyes on that board right there. They're learning how to play a math game, which Lisa will later show you the slide of. And there's a student up front with Mrs. Santa Maria going over the game. Students aren't gathered in a circle, huddling over, trying to see that game being taught. Every single student can see that game, and that student is helping model the game with Mrs. Santa Maria. Here's a kindergartner up at the board, brand-new board that they just got installed a couple weeks ago, and working on her morning letter. They're putting letters into words. And you can see all the hands up in the crowd as every single one of those kindergartners is waiting their turn to hopefully be the next person to go up to the interactive whiteboard. And this is a first-grade classroom during word work. And this child is blending words, letters together to make words up on their interactive whiteboard in their classroom. What I'm using right here, this is called an active slate. This is a new piece of technology that's come into a couple classrooms. It goes along with our Promethean board. You can see it's wireless. I'll stay put because I'm supposed to be up here so you can at-home see us. But the idea of this is it allows the teacher to be mobile in the classroom. So if you need to go and redirect a student, you have that freedom to walk away from your board and be able to work the room in any way you want and still be teaching at the same time. And you can also pass it off to a student to do some work from the spot where they're working as well. It's a really neat addition to some of the tools that we already have in our classroom. I'm going to pass it off to Lisa Albright.
Hi. So I'm going to share with you some slides that are from our lessons. So this would be a page that is from one of our math lessons. We do, it used to be math reflexes. I would just sit there and say, okay, so who can come up and show me on my little Judy clock that they call them, 4:30? But now I can actually have kids come up. They can grab their pen. They can write, it's 4:30. I can have them clear it. And then I can just tap right here and instantly I have another time for them to do. So actually, these are all just different times that are set up. They're kind of layered one behind each other. But again, the kids who are on the floor have their own whiteboards so they can actually participate as well. So while I'm having one child come up here and write the answer, the rest are definitely sitting on the board doing the same thing, writing their answers. They're not just sitting there waiting for their turn. This is the game actually that you saw a picture of Mrs. Santa Maria using. What's really nice about this is I have everything right here at my fingertips. I'm not fumbling with my everyday math deck. I'm not fumbling with my pieces and a piece of paper. And so behind here, there are cards that I can pull out that will tell the numbers that I want the children to use. I also have the directions that the kids can read while I'm doing it. But they needed to pull out a number 62. They need to take their marker and put it on a 62. They'll pull out another number. And basically, what they need to do is find the difference between 35 and 62. I have quick access to a calculator. So if the kids needed to do, what did I say it was? 62 takeaway 35 to check their answers. And this is also nice, too, because if the game had dice, I can instantly show dice, hopefully. Nope. It should come up. There we go. And they can roll all sorts of different types of things. And I just put the dice on there because I wanted to show you it's really cool math tools that we have access to. Here's a lesson for a page from a word work lesson. Please remember, think that there are really like 40 pages in my lesson. That was just one of them. My word work lesson would be about 10 pages. But we've been working on silent E. So I would ask kids, who can find the picture that goes with this particular word? Hopefully, they would drag the can up. They get a little bit of reward there. And then we talk about how you can change can if you add the silent E and put it through my magic silent E container here. It turns a can into a cane. And again, all those things seem like little tricks, and they are tricks, but they really help keep the kids engaged. They love hearing that sort of stuff. And again, they would be having their whiteboard and changing can into a cane on their whiteboard. I also want to say that this doesn't take away, I know that I was just using dice and things like that, but we also have pictures like of face-10 blocks and things like that. I show them on here, but the kids still are actually, when they go off to work by themselves, they're still using those manipulatives. This is not a replacement for manipulatives. It's just a way for me to show it more carefully. And so they can all see it at once. And like Jamie said, they're not looking over and crowding around to see the directions for things. The next slide is about active votes. At your seat or at tables, there are some active votes, which I am going to ask you to try in just a minute. So if you want to grab one of those. But these are some of the benefits of active votes. Instant assessment, which I'm going to show you in a minute what that looks like. These votes are all just for multiple-choice things, but it really helps prep kids for those kneecaps that we have to give and all those other different sorts of assessments. It really increases engagement and participation. What used to be me just asking a question and one child raising their hand and me just getting the answer from one child, now I have all 18 of their answers. And also, it provides safe participation for each student. If you look on the top of your active vote, there's a number. Each child is assigned a number. So when they vote, their names aren't coming up. It's a number that's coming up so they don't feel like, oh, it's me that got it wrong. And, let's see. Here's a little pull tab just to show that. Let's look at some results. So I'm going to ask you right now to actually do one of our questions from our math lesson. The question is, John went to the store with a $5 bill in his pocket. He bought markers for $1.37. How much change should he have? So if you think it's $4.63, type in A and so on. And now you'll see, as you vote, it lights right up. Sometimes I can time it if I wanted to see whether kids can do it in 30 seconds or not. And I'm going to assume everybody who wanted to vote, oh, there's still a few more left. I don't know, 5 and 14 got used? Nope. So I'm just going to stop the voting. And it noticed that one more person did not do it. But here are my results. I can look in a pie graph to see very quickly that most of you chose B, and there were a few people who did not. This is the one that we usually use, that the kids instantly get to see. It's green. That means that's the correct answer. And the kids like to see the percentage of how many people got it right. But I can go back and see who answered what. So now I can tell who of you got the right answer and who didn't. I can also tell how long it took you to answer. This person took 17 seconds. But it's just great. And all of this gets stored so that I can look at it. And let me show you. I'm going to use our document camera so that you can see. But I can actually save it, and I can print my answers. Usually, I print it in color.
Can you zoom in?
What's that, though?
Sure.
There we go. It's kind of hard to see. Usually, they're color-coded. You can very faintly see that this A and this C are lighter colored. Usually, they're green, and the red ones are the wrong answers. But this one, I sorted just by the question that I asked. This was 24 takeaway 11. And I can see quickly who got it right. I can also sort it by the student. So if I just wanted to see all of number 10's answers. And you can save these over a period of days. So I can look at the end of Unit 3 and see how many times, when I did use votes, that child got things right or wrong. So I can do it by question, by student. And again, it just shows me how long it takes them to answer things. So it's really nice data to save and collect, and it's data on all the kids. Like I said, not just one or two of them from raising their hands. And I'm not sure, we're here, you're next?
We also use iPads and iTouch in the classroom. And we don't use them as teaching tools as much as we use them for practicing tools. The apps on iPads and iTouch are for practicing. They make repetitive practice fun and engaging. And we're engaging the learners with repetitive practice. It's kind of repetitive in itself, actually. We're eliminating worksheets. We are really lucky to have iPads. Here's a child here who's doing some handwriting practice with an iPad. The iTouch, a child is practicing math facts. And here, two kids are working together doing research on an iPad. Because we, many teachers have these tools in the classroom, we're able to not only use the one that we have, but we're able to share them. For example, in my classroom, if I do LH All and ask teachers to share with me their iPod touches or their iPads, the next morning for my lesson, I could have 15 on my desk. And kids can work in groups or they can work individually to solidify math facts, can practice concepts. Once again, they're not a teaching tool, but they're a practice tool that are really engaging for the kids.
So I'm going to talk to you now about the document camera. You saw Lisa using it a little bit earlier. And what this is really doing is replacing the overhead projector that we always used to use. There are many benefits of the document camera. The number-one benefit really is that it's live video. So what we're able to do, rather than having to put everything on overhead transparencies like we used to have to do before, if there's something that really can't be copied, now you can actually just slide it right under the document camera and you can see it live. This is a great benefit for showing a lot of things. We've actually showed how to play a game under there before. If you're trying to show kids how to fold origami, that's a great example. But we can also use it for using examples of great student work that we wanted to share with the kids. So you can slide anything under there, really to be able to present in front of all the kids what you want them to see. One of the other huge benefits of the document camera is that we're able to use time-lapse video. And one of the ways that we use that within our classroom is a life cycles unit that we always teach in second grade where we hatch butterflies and baby chicks. So we were able to utilize the document camera last year for this specific purpose because, you know, the old saying goes, it never works out the way you want it to. And of course, when the chicks are hatching, of course, it's going to happen when you're not in the classroom or overnight when we're not here. So what I was able to do was actually take the document camera and set it up on time-lapse video. I can choose the amount of time between each session. And it could be a half hour. It could be an hour. It could be a minute. And really, what it's going to do is just take a still photo during that time so we can go back to it when we are back in the classroom and see what happened. So I have a great example. This is one of the butterflies hatching. And of course, this video was huge and long, and I was able to trim it down to really just the one minute or so that you can actually see the butterfly coming out of its chrysalis. So rather than us spending our day sitting in front of the butterfly cage, watching the butterfly come out, instead, I told the kids, I've set up the document camera. It's going to catch everything that we want to see, and we'll come back to it when we know that the butterflies come out. So you can see, that's just a great example of how we've been able to use the document camera. I'm also going to talk about netbooks and laptops. And as Heidi was saying before, when she was teaching here before, you know, we did have computers in the classroom, but typically, there were only one or two. And it made it so that there wasn't as much access for all of the kids to be using computers. So what we have now are class sets of netbooks and laptops that we can use, so the whole class can work together on a project. So I have some examples here. We have a student who's working on a podcast of some work that he's done. We also have a couple of kids who are using a netbook to do some research. That's it. We just want to let you know how much we love these technology tools, how much they've totally changed our teaching, and more than anything else, how much they're really engaging students and getting them excited about learning. Thank you.
Do you want to take questions?
Can we take that? Sure.
I have a question.
Yeah?
Is there a perpetual orientation for teachers to learn how to use the active slate and the Promethean board?
Yeah, that's actually a great question. Lisa and I were actually just over talking with--
We need you to repeat the question.
Oh, I'm sorry. The question was, is there a training happening to keep teachers up to date in terms of our technology, especially the Promethean board? Actually, we were over talking with Dr. Zee just recently about that, and we'll be starting some more classes going on. It's been over the summer we've been offering some different classes, and people have gone different ways in terms of getting their training in the building. We were lucky enough that the school department a couple of years ago supported some training, and we had some gentlemen fly in and train about eight of us on these, who are solid enough to now be supporting our other staff. And that's one of the things that we are doing within our buildings.
And I have to say, just coming into this new, using this technology, it's very easy to use. I took a class with Lisa and Jamie. They taught a class this summer, which was very informative. And then the Promethean Planet, the website actually has tutorials, too, for teachers to use. So it's very, you know, so there's a different, yeah, very teacher-friendly.
So could you talk about how your lesson plans have changed and whether you've used this long enough to be able to say whether you're delivering more education in the same amount of time?
Sure. Let me see if I can rephrase your question again. You want me to answer kind of, the question was, has it changed my teaching and made my lessons more, tightened them up? Is that--
Presumably, you're not converting your paper lessons to this technology.
Right.
Presumably, you're using technology to create different lesson plans. But I just want to confirm that. But I think more importantly, have you found, if you use it long enough, to be able to see whether you're delivering more information, more education to the students in the same amount of time?
I'm going to say yes. I do feel that I deliver more in the same amount of time. Because most of these charts I've created. And so I've had to take that time to really plan what it is I want to say, what it is I want the kids to actually be able to read and remember. And the kids are much more engaged. Just those active votes. I was, I'm able to get every single one of them to participate in my lesson. Nobody can just sit there and just go, you know, look at the ceiling. And they want to participate. They want to see their answers come up. Their goal is for everybody to get on the green. My lessons are, I want to use the word tighter. There's not as much downtime. It's moving, the pace is faster, which I think the kids appreciate more. What else? And I think sometimes it is creation of new things. And I think it is, our paper lessons, I think we're still delivering the same teaching points, but I think, but the teaching points do look different, if that was your question. And like Lisa said, I think that clock was a great example. The kids would have been waiting for us to spin that clock every single time to show eight different times. It's just bam, bam, bam. It is a lot less wait time for them, and it is tighter teaching for us, for sure. And I also say that, especially as a result of the active votes that we're using as an assessment tool, because that assessment is happening immediately and we can check it right away, and it's kind of a way for us to gauge how the kids are taking in that knowledge. And what we often find ourselves saying is, well, you know, we noticed that a lot of you got that right. Let's hear how you got to that answer. And I want to know what you were thinking to get there. And often, what we find is that the kids are kind of explaining their thinking in very different ways. So we're able to say, well, you know, Suzie was able to figure it out this way, but somebody else figured it out another way. And so I think that it's really kind of getting at that our brains all work in different ways and that we're all going to approach the answer in a different way, but we're all, hopefully, going to get there.
One more thing, too, is that I think that brain research these days is also showing that kids are just learning in such different ways. Their brains are almost being trained to receive information at a much quicker pace in a more efficient way. And this also is really complementary to that sort of thinking that kids are, you know, of the 21st century and are not the kind of learners or thinkers that we are. And we're sort of raising a generation of kids who will learn differently, think differently, and produce in a different sort of way because of the technology that they're being trained with.
I want to thank you again. We have to go upstairs for our real meeting. Good job. Good job. Thank you. Thank you. I'd like to call the meeting back to order, and we'll begin, unless the superintendent now to take the role call.
It's Ann Mayer. Carol Chelman.
Here.
Rebecca Remison.
Here.
Dexter Legg.
Here.
Kent LaPage.
Here.
Ann Walker.
Here.
Mitch Shulman.
Here.
Tom Martin.
Here.
Leslie Stevens.
Here.
Clay Haywood.
Here.
Linda Brulette.
Here.
Savannah Fedorow.
Very good. So moving along the agenda, on number five, acceptance of minutes, I'll take a motion to accept September 28, 2010.
So moved.
Second.
Any comment on those minutes? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And a motion to accept October 12, 2010.
So moved.
Second.
And any comments on that? Okay. Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any opposed? Thank you. There's no public comment tonight? No, I mean, the period, if somebody wanted to speak, we would have one, but I mean, there's nobody here.
That would be negative.
And we've had our special presentation, unless the press would like to get out. So we'll move right into the superintendent's report.
Yes, thank you. In your package, you have the latest copy of Board and Administrator for the month of October, as well as the superintendent's update, events upcoming in November, highlighting the new bullying law. Mr. Zadovick has worked with Jim Nukas and others and has announced a round of grant funding that will take place. It happened two years ago where teachers are offered an opportunity to apply for a grant. It's a competitive process. The funds come from the Clipper Fund, as well as some information about some of the upcoming PD we've planned for folks in the district around technology. And the only other item, I would remind the board that tomorrow night, I know there's a JBC meeting, but there's also a presentation at the Little Theater at 6:30 around the Wellness Committee and Dr. Rogers on the 5210 campaign. You have materials, documents that are needed for tonight's workshop session. And I'd provide you notice that a group of students coming out of the Robert J. Lister Academy will actually be attending Costa Rica in March next year. It's really, you'll hear more about it, I'm sure, when Nancy comes and speaks to you, but it's a really nice, integrated thematic project. And students are working on fundraising. They're studying. They have blogs going on. They're tracking. They're learning how to put links on webpages and in and out. And you'll hear a lot more about it, but they'll be attending in March at some point. Some six or seven students are hopeful to attend. And that's it. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
No? Okay. I just want to take, just back up for one second and take a moment to thank the second grade teachers here at Little Harbor for an excellent presentation on some of the new technologies that are here in the building and in other elementary school buildings as well. The interactive whiteboard and this whole sort of array of other technologies. I thought they did a great job. Thank you. Thank them for doing it, and thank Mr. Grossman for the board. Okay. So let's move into the workshop.
Okay. So I'm going to introduce the process for having a bit of a discussion about comparative metrics documents in your board packet. And I'm going to sort of play the role of facilitator in this discussion, and Mr. McDonald will be the presenter, so to speak. And so I'm going to go through, in your packet, there were a couple of pieces I just want to reacquaint you with. One was what we kind of called homework, and that is to say, rather than have a lot of downtime in this discussion, as the protocol would outline, we would want to try to have you do some of that reflection beforehand so we can keep the discussion going.
Mike. Steve, just pull your mic out a little bit.
So what I'd like to do is quickly go over the sheet that says tuning protocol in your packet. And this is similar to some of the ways we have collaborative discussions. Teachers have collaborative discussions with each other, which is always one of the side benefits to us using it, is to get a sense of that. And you'll notice that the way this is framed is really for teachers sitting together around student work, whereas we're applying it to a conversation with the work of this comparative metrics document, which is really the text for this discussion. Our goal is to reflect on the comparative metrics and to walk away, and have Ed walk away in particular, with some feedback on to how he might take some next steps around framing that to best meet the needs that you've outlined for this as a comparative document for a number of different indicators for how the district looks. So I'm going to turn it over to him in a minute to do a presentation of the methodology he's used to put this together, as well as an overview of what it says. But I just want to run through the process briefly. Following that presentation, what we want to try to do is stick to a progression of questions and a progression of feedback that would go like this. We would start with some period of just clarifying questions. That is to say, only questions to clarify a step of the methodology or a number on the on the sheet, not to get into any deeper discussion than that. So it's just purely to, uh, make sure we understand, uh, the, the numbers and the metrics in front of us, uh, not to start talking about whether they're the right ones or, uh, was the methodology the right methodology or anything like that, but just a few, a few sec, a few minutes for clarifying questions. Uh, and then what we'll do is we'll skip over these pauses to reflect because that was the, the task assigned to you, uh, and we'll move a little more quickly into, um, some feedback. And I'll let Ed sort of set that up, uh, in terms of some of the feedback, but on the sheet that you got that was titled the homework sheet were some of the prompting questions that we would hope to hear some feedback around. Uh, that is to say, is there anything that needs to be clarified about the methodology? Does the methodology produce the peer group that seems the most appropriate? Is there anything that needs to be clarified concerning the metrics that are presented? Are the, there are metrics that don't seem to give helpful information? Are there, uh, metrics that are missing that you think would be more helpful? Uh, what did you learn about Portsmouth schools by reading this? Uh, and what questions did reading this leave you about Portsmouth schools? So, uh, those are just some of the questions. We don't have to stick necessarily right to that script, but just some of the prompting questions in terms of the feedback. Um, and just usually, uh, as, as per the protocol, what we would normally do is start with some kind of, uh, positive feedback of how the document that you have in front of you sort of is in line with, uh, the goals you would have for this. So what's, what, what's positive about it? Uh, what kind of feedback would you give that, you know, that seems to be on track for what you envisioned this to, to do? Uh, and then move into more of a probing questions, um, and, you know, basically start with the positive and then move into any other questions or, uh, or feedback that would call into question, uh, whether this was perfectly in line with what you had hoped. Uh, after that session of feedback during which, um, isn't really, um, time we're going to engage greatly with, uh, with question and answer with Ed, but we're really just talking more as a group, uh, we'll have him reflect a little bit at the end, uh, and hear his thoughts for, uh, what, you know, what are the takeaway points for him, uh, in this? So that's kind of the way the, uh, protocol is framed. Um, and normally with a, with a, say, a teacher presenting in this kind of a piece, what you would hope to do is they would leave with a sense of how they might that, make that lesson even more, uh, effective. You know, if we were doing this with the second grade team we just observed and they were going through a protocol to tune that presentation, they would hopefully leave with some good feedback in terms of how they would actually, um, you know, take what was good and improve on it. So, uh, that's kind of the tone we're trying to set. Any questions about the protocol and the process at all? I'm going to turn it over then to Ed to do a presentation of the comparative metrics.
So hopefully in your package, you have this, this copy here and it, reminder for folks at home, one of the school board's goals this year is essentially to develop, track and report out, uh, the district's performance against a peer cohort group. So this is an attempt to find, um, a group as a starting point, um, to, to do some comparative analysis around, be it academic performance, budget, et cetera. And so there's a six-step methodology I use. The first was to just look at districts that were similarly sized. Um, the thought being that they may be constrained as we are, there may be economies of scale or not that are, exist in a district of some 2,600 pupils. And so you see the list of schools that actually fall in the 2000 to 2999 range. And, um, I was also asked at, at an earlier occasion is to, to look at what might be best in class districts. And so included in there are, um, four other districts because they were, um, bronze or silver recipients, uh, in the U.S. News and World Report last December. So you have Oyster River, Hanover, Dresden, Cole Brown and Hollis Brookline in that best in class category. So I provided two years of data for you and you can see that, um, in 09, 010, there are really three schools that are very close in terms of student population. You'll see that Milford is 105 students higher. Governor Wentworth is 103 students higher in total. And Contukook as well as 110. Um, we have, um, Governor, did I say Governor Wentworth? I apologize for that. They're just slightly lower, they're down 132 pupils. So they seem to be, when you look at a two-year span, closest to Portsmouth in terms of size. And so the second step was then to go down and look at the poverty indicator, to look at the socioeconomics of the district. And typically what the, you, the state uses as a proxy for that is free and reduced lunch. And so again, I provided you two years of data to kind of look there and see, how do those that are initially close in size actually match up in terms of, uh, free and reduced school lunch eligibility? Portsmouth in 09, 10, as a total district, had 22.35% free and reduced lunch students. When you look at Milford, you see that they're within 2.5%, they're at 19.85. You look at Governor Wentworth, they're much higher by over 10 basis points, 33.18. But Merrimack Valley and Contukook again are within a three to four point range in terms of, uh, the poverty indicator in terms of districts. So having done those two steps, the third step was to just take a quick look at, um, per pupil cost. And arguably, there's different ways to assemble this data or work one's way in, but, but again, I took the two-year data as how the state calculates per pupil cost. What one quickly notices again is that, um, the best in class in Oyster River, um, in terms of what they spend, they spend about $1,300 more than Portsmouth does per pupil. And those other districts that are close, Governor Wentworth and Contukook are below by about $1,300 per pupil. Now, there's a range there obviously, and as I would remind the board, when we look at per pupil costs, the way the state conducts that formula, it's expenditures from any source derived. It's not simply a measure of demand on the local tax base, but it's how, it's revenues, expenditures from any source, i.e. grants, Title I, era funding, et cetera, et cetera. So that was step three. When we went to step four, again, we, we, we looked at, uh, I lined them up in terms of their enrollment, their poverty indicator, their cost per pupil, and then tried to do an assessment of, um, how the community measured up in terms of its relative wealth. Um, by looking at valuation rates, looking at the level of effort in terms of the tax rate, um, so that you can see when you look at Portsmouth, we have 3.8 billion in assessed valuation. Governor Wentworth is at $4.6 billion. Um, you look at other districts nearby, Merrimack Valley, um, they're lesser, at 1.6 and Contukook is over the $2 billion in assessed valuation. And then you look at what percentage of the tax rate was spent for education and I did those percentages to look and see Portsmouth in, and this is in the 08, 09 year, um, 47% of the tax, uh, went to local education. That includes the statewide property tax as well as the local, uh, education tax. And similar in that match, our Governor Wentworth, Contukook and Merrimack Valley again. Laconia is close to us there, but in other measures, they don't seem to, to, to line up as well or as neatly. And then we looked at, step five was to just look at, all right, what are the teacher costs? What's the educational attainment of the teaching force? And what are the total teacher-student ratios, i.e. not just core teachers, but all professional staff divided into the, uh, student population in the, in the district? So when one looks at that, we see that, um, three out of the four best in class districts outspend in, in terms of teacher average salary in 09, 010. Oyster River, the average teacher salary is 62,199. Portsmouth is at 56,737. Similarly, Oyster River and Portsmouth line up insofar as the percentage of teachers who have a master's degree. And we have more teachers who have a, uh, CAGS degree or advanced degree beyond the masters, um, by some 5%. Only Hanover is the one that outranks all schools in terms of teachers, uh, on the high end, whether masters or better in terms of that. And when one looks at pupils and all professional staff and does the calculation there, you'll see that on average, uh, Portsmouth is at 10.3 in terms of the staffing ratio. Governor Wentworth is exactly 10.3. Contukook is a little bit higher, 11.2, and Oyster River at 11.5. And so having done those five, uh, steps, step six was to simply, um, just start pulling some performance data together. And one could go in a thousand different directions in terms of what one might want to look at. I simply took, um, things like average class size in those districts. Um, I, and I, I basically limited the cohort to Governor Wentworth, Contukook, Merrimack Valley and the one best in class, Oyster River, because they're running a K-12 district. So if you look at grades one and two and look at average class size, you can see Governor Wentworth is at 14.5 in the, uh, 09, 10 school year, Merrimack Valley at 17.9. Portsmouth, second lowest, 15.7. Ironically, Oyster River in grades one and two and three, four is a little bit higher at 18.6 and 19.6. But you see Portsmouth in that data is pretty much in the middle. You look at the attendance rates for 08, 09, um, we're at 95.2%, third ranked amongst that cohort group. Homeschooled students, we have the fewest homeschooled students, 16, where some other districts are up around 121, 115 students who are electing to be homeschooled. That's, I shouldn't, I need to be factual here presenting data, so I'm going to keep quiet. Uh, that, that, you know, and then, and then, and looking at AYP, um, not the misery loves company necessarily, but, but, but that you can see that the, uh, ever-growing demands to meet the, the, uh, ever-increasing targets is placing all districts in difficult situations. Um, only one school, Governor Wentworth, made AYP in reading in 2010 and Merrimack Valley did so in math, but even best in class didn't make AYP in those two categories last year. And then I gave you the actual percentages around reading proficiency and math proficiency, um, in 2010. And so you'll see Oyster River did outperform. They are best in class in terms of their percentage performance, 81% in reading and, um, I'm losing it here in math, the number, but it's in the 80, 80.
79.
Thank you, 79. And, um, we're, we're pretty much on average with the others, within two or three percentage points in terms of proficiency against those other cohort groups. So, that's, that's just a draft. I'll answer any clarifying questions you may have about, uh, the methodology to, to lay that out.
How easily is this data collected and from how many different sources do you have to, to collect it?
The, the, in all honesty, these are largely found on the DOE webpage and you can, you just need to kind of pull them out and cut and paste them, so to speak. But there are a whole other data sources on the DOE webpage that I didn't provide here that one could look at.
First, this is terrific stuff. Is that a good warm comment?
Well, we saved the warm comment until after the clarifying question.
Well, then I'll, I'll withdraw that.
That's not people, one more cool, right?
So, uh, clarifying.
Yes.
Can I ask a question about clarifying data?
Mm-hmm.
So, um, on page three, could you explain the difference, uh, in the student-teacher ratio, uh, between the two columns? The first column that says number of teachers and then the total column that's actually used, um, to, to divide against the pupils. What's, what's the difference between those two?
It's, it's just three different, um, sets of data that the, uh, DOE puts together. So on the first one, they're just showing what the average teacher salary is in district.
No, no, I'm, what I'm saying is that, so for Portsmouth, for example, the number of teachers that you show is 236.
It's inconsistent, isn't it?
And then, and then, but we're, we're using 236 and I noticed in most cases.
It goes down.
It goes down, but not all cases. But, but what's going on there?
That's a great question. And you'll, I've said the same thing in terms of, of, when I put the data together and then looked at that, why does that number change? Because in some districts it doesn't.
Most of it does.
But that's how it's reported on the DOE webpage, so it was, it's.
All right.
I don't know the answer to that, Dexter, in all honesty.
And so my other questions are related to more data.
Mm-hmm.
So for example, is the salary information available, um, from other districts on paraprofessionals or administrators or other, other school employees or is it strictly teachers?
I, I think we can get it, but it's not on the DOE webpage, but I can grab that.
And then a further question on, again, doing, uh, because what the trouble is, this actually leads to the, to the need for more information.
Mm-hmm.
Challenge on this stuff. But, um, on page two, um, I, I understand how the, the per pupil cost is derived, um, but do we know, uh, for other districts, what the ratio is of general funds to special funds? Um, we, we have about a 10% special funds to, to, to overall revenue, but do we have that information from other districts? We can get it. Because I think that would be helpful because then you begin to just. Pull it out. Pull it out and, and, and learn a little bit more about what some of the cost drivers are. Thanks. Sure. But this is really good stuff.
So, so the, um, so any other clarifying questions? Because I think there are, there are a lot of discussion points that we'll go into, uh, with, with what's here, what's not here and, um, Kent. Okay, clarifying points and I guess also going somewhat into what is and isn't here. Follow a little bit up from what Dexter's saying is, is that, you know, it's, it is, um, classroom teachers versus the non-classroom teachers. Uh, I mean, if I look at actually page four, um, and you have the average class size in public, uh, uh, elementary schools, the, the variance there, and I think that's just a clarifying of what it is. Along with that is that, um, under your, uh, homework questions here that I took, are there metrics that don't seem to be, uh, I say helpful or helpful information? It is that I'm not sure whether it's classroom teachers and/or whether these districts may or may not have, uh, something such as a tech center, uh, busing, uh, special ed ratio. I don't see, and did I miss that there is, is there a special ed ratio that we, we could use in some, uh, manner? Then, as much as we pride ourselves in the part about, uh, homeschool being extremely low, uh, I think a, a, a number that I would like clarified out there, um, is number of students that we lose both in SAU 15 and 51 to private schools. And I would assume there is a, a, a matrix out there on, in DOE stating, you know, this is the number of students that are in Portsmouth and we know that X is going to, uh, private type schools, so, you know, do we compare, um, you know, to Hanover or whoever on that? So that'd be a kind of a clarifying one because we, we've only taken out that section of homeschooled. To me, what, you know, clarifying is, is that, well, what about the students we don't have? I think that's the big question on that one line. Um, and this is one that's always gets me when we do, do this type of comparison, is that we're missing the, either the national or regional type level, and, and I apologize as I read this, I'm trying to think, is there a national and, uh, and/or regional? Because we test regionally, uh, with, with other states. Is there, is there a matrix out there that would do a regional, if not also then a national and saying that that's where the averages might be? And, and again, having, you know, uh, similar type schools such as Marshwood, York and, um, even Trape and then Newburyport to the south that have a similar type programming and/or student base, I, I'd be curious whether that matrix could be utilized into it because their, their, their influences are there also upon our community. Those are the ones I need to clarify that I think more than anything as I looked at it for homework. Other questions, questions, clarifying questions, questions you want Ed to answer right now? I, I agree with, uh, Kent just, uh, one of the other thoughts I have is just looking at other New England states to understand, you know, we've got a segmentation here of New Hampshire, but are there things that, uh, other states are experiencing, so not necessarily cross-border, but really taking a look at, you know, Rhode Island, Connecticut, Mass. And not saying we need to grab, uh, one from each state, but just wondering, are there some differences, uh, out there that, uh, maybe lend, uh, some kind of a, a particular lens that would allow us to look at something differently? Uh, and then also, um, you know, we have three elementary schools, a middle and a high school and a, and a, a Lister Academy, you know, are the costs different because we have, uh, in a sense, running, uh, six building operation? And are these other schools running three building operations, you know, or eight building operations? So, uh, you know, trying to add one more metric. And there's a, a lot of other ones that I start, you know, coming into, but it's more about just understanding, you know, what data is available.
Um, this data, um, you probably can't get from the state, but, um, I was just curious, uh, under the districts of similar size on the first page, if you start, um, calculating from the kindergarten on up or, or preschool on up, it's, it's obvious that in Portsmouth, and this is just something to think about, um, we have the highest amount of students in, in the high school. Um, I think it's probably safe to say that, uh, that the average parents in, in Portsmouth are, are probably around the age of 36 and, and older. Um, I think you might want to keep that in, in your heads as well. That's all I have to say.
Go. Just, Ed, if you could clarify, um, under valuation and local tax, um, where you say Portsmouth spends less than 50% of the total local tax for education, conversely, Oyster River spends 71% of its local tax in education. Could you just clarify, comment on that?
Sure. So that's the 08, 09 tax rate, it's published on the DOE website. And, and in that year, um, you had $5.72 per thousand evaluation for local ed, $2.32 in, uh, statewide property tax. The total tax bill per thousand valuation was $17.09. So if you add this local and state ed together, you spent 47% of your tax bill per thousand evaluation on education.
So it should be local and state tax?
Yes.
Okay, because it just says local.
Yeah, well, then I need to correct that, I'm sorry.
So we'll move into some, uh, feedback now and, and, uh, obviously questions can continue, especially questions that are more, you know, out there for, for the food for thought. Um, and, and Ed will continue to take notes and we'd like him to sort of report back of his, uh, takeaway points from our discussion at this point, so.
I'm, I'm, I think this is a terrific document. Uh, you know, this is, uh,
You know, this is the first time that we've actually gotten our hands around some real numbers that provide a, a couple of different things. And there's really, you know, to me, this data serves two different purposes. One, you know, it enables us to go out into the community and, you know, have a real report card that stack ranks where we're going. The missing piece that I'm trying to, you know, get my hands around are, is, you know, what do we actually do with this data? You know, aside from, you know, presenting it out there as a report card. But in terms of actionable, you know, information, as well as trying to find some insightful pieces of information, some nuggets that would sit there and say, you know, Governor Wentworth's school district is doing this, you know, this is why their numbers have come up here. You know, there's, there's nothing that suddenly, you know, gives us insight as to how these numbers are built for all these other schools. So, quantitatively, you know, we're on the mark, you know, we've got a lot of data, but in terms of drawing conclusions as to, you know, what are other school districts doing that we could potentially learn from and change what we're doing, is, is one of those pieces that, you know, I'm kind of stuck with, that the question that I'm posing out there is, what do we do with the data?
When I read this, page two, the per pupil cost and then the bottom part that explains what the pupil cost is, I'd like to see that first, because I went straight for the numbers, and I think people often go straight for the numbers, and per pupil cost, and I think the explanation of it really should come first, because I think we get a lot of questions around budget time about what, does that mean that that's what it costs to educate one of our kids, and that's not what that number's used for at all? So, I think we need to be really explicitly clear in what that number is, and the explanation, I think, maybe should come first.
I, I wanted to comment on page three, where, where it indicates that, that Portsmouth spent forty-seven percent of its budget on education, whereas Oyster River spent seventy-one percent. There was a time years back when that was the amount that Portsmouth spent on education, and, and then it suddenly zoomed down to a lot, forty percent. So, I, I think that's a very telling, very telling number.
Dexter.
So, Ed, this is great, sir.
Thank you.
And, and this is, this is, it's a great starting point. I think, two thoughts. One is, although we should think about adding some districts, I think, at the end of the day, what we're really trying to use this for is to figure out how we can improve our performance. And it's, and the performance has improved along a couple of dimensions. One, it's, it's the outcomes of, of the students. I mean, are they achieving what we want them to achieve? And, and I would say, based on this, we're doing okay, but, but there's room to grow. And the other dimension is value. Are, are we getting the right value for, for what we're spending? And to Tom's point, how can we learn from, from other districts, either best of breed or districts that look like us, that are having some successes, to improve how we're spending our resources? And so, although there may be a tendency on this thing to add more stuff to learn more about the broad landscape, at the end of the day, I think what we want to do is identify some areas where we can really drill down in real detail to understand a few key things, because the reality is that the administration has limited resource, and if you had a group of, of, of ten analysts, you could go to town on this, but we don't have a group of ten analysts. So, we need to be careful, I think, as a group, of asking what we want the administration to do on this. But I think if it's still driven to those two outcomes, are, are we using our resources in the best way possible to, to achieve, to, to increase the, the, the performance of our students? But, but this is a great, great, great stuff. I mean, I, you guys, you guys deserve an awful lot of kudos for beginning to put this together, because it'll help the conversation, and all of us will be better informed, and the community will be a lot better informed in this, so, I mean, well done.
I agree with Dexter. I think when you add more and more and more, it gets a little bit overwhelming, and then you lose the primary message. One thing I think that we need to think about is, every year, we get asked the same questions, the same five or six questions from city council, and if we go back to those five or six questions, at the end of the day, we need to be answering those questions. And one of the, the, one of the questions is, what does per pupil cost mean? The other one we always get asked about, and we get caught in from some of the city councils, is, we have ten point three teachers for every, or ten point three students for every teacher. And that's really not accurate. And so, maybe we need to, I think we need to just be really careful how we present that and be clear about what a real teacher is versus what some of the other roles are and how we're coming to that number. Because I think that can be a dangerous number, but I think that's one of the questions we get asked over and over again. So, maybe in thinking about this, looking at those questions we get every year from city council to inform some of this data. And this, I agree, this is awesome.
Another question. I have another question. So, I, I said don't increase the, the span of this thing, but it would, it would help, I think, us on the, on the, the average salary for our teachers to understand a couple of things. What is, I mean, what is the driver of all of those? I mean, is it, is it just contract, is, is it length of experience? Is it the quality of the teachers? In other words, that they have, have more advanced degrees, seniority? And the other thing that'll be helpful, although it goes outside our cohort, is because at the end of the day, we're trying to attract talent. It may be helpful to look at area schools just in that one dimension, because it would seem to me that we're not necessarily drawing talent from the northern part of the state. We're, we're trying to compete for teachers who want to live in the seacoast, and so it may be helpful to look at the immediate towns, and I would, in fact, would, would go into York and, and some of the Marshfield, because, again, those teachers are saying, I want to live in the seacoast. You're, you're trying to attract the best from that group. It may be helpful to have that information, so we better understand what the driver is there, or drivers are.
Just on salary.
Just, just on salary, because, because, because those are different school districts in so many ways, but on the salary dimension, I mean, we, we're, we're competing in the marketplace for this, for those teachers. So, on that one dimension, it may be worthwhile. We may learn something, we may not.
I agree. Kent?
Again, it's, it's a great start beyond what we've probably ever had to help us start to have a better understanding of the numbers. Where I find the biggest downfall, and when I read this over the weekend, because there is a downfall to this, is that this is the numbers. And I think what we, what are, what are we about? Not just the Portsmouth School Board, but the Portsmouth School System. We're not about the numbers. We sell an education to every two thousand-plus students that we have here, and what is the final outcome after thirteen-plus years? What we, and we're not alone in this. What happens to that population? We had responsibility for thirteen-plus years if they had a child of special needs, it can be, you know, the three years prior to that, and some with special needs X amount of years after that. Because we produce a product. You know, it, it, it's not a clear product, but everyone who gets to the senior year of high school is given a diploma, and the diploma is only as good as what the, what we produce during that. The numbers are needed. The numbers are needed to sell it towards city council, they're needed to sell towards the public. But what is it that it equates to? And it equates to a child. And the child is what we have at the very end. And there's a lot of variables in during, that might be good to have in there. How many kids are doing activities? How do we keep kids engaged in, in, in things, such as whether it be sports, whether it be band? Because those are important things that, when it comes budget time, they get on the, they get on the chopping block beforehand. And guess what? If you didn't have band, and you didn't have some athletics, and you didn't have certain things, when we get to that end year of the senior year, and I don't know how you measure this, or how you equate this to it, how many kids go to an Ivy League? You know, it, it isn't as much as an Ivy League school, it's, how long do we get them? You know, how many of our students, and I'm sure we can get the data, get a two-year, four-year, go into the military, get a doctorate, get, get something along that line, six years out. And I think that's what we've produced. You know, these are the numbers. What have we produced? We don't know what we've produced, because when we get to the senior year, we sort of say, thank you very much, here's your diploma. But the more important part is, what did those students do as contributing citizens to the world? And I think this, this gets us to the numbers. Now, we need to put those numbers and say, guess what, Portsmouth, guess what? We produce, sixty percent of kids go and get a four-year degree, and they are able to be contributing, and, you know, that's been the longstanding thing, make them contributing citizens in the, in the, in the world, not just in the Portsmouth community. So, that's the only, again, excellent document, but what's the end?
So, I just have a couple of quick questions then. So, I, I agree that the teacher information chart, in terms of all teachers, average number of teachers, total pupil ratio, that's a little confusing, so I, I do think that that needs to be clarified, because in a sense, the way I'm looking at it, and tell me if I'm wrong, so we have two hundred and thirty-six that we're counting teachers. So, that really means, we have two hundred and thirty-six adults who have a teacher contract. Is that what that number is?
I'll check with the state exactly why there's variance there. I don't know what the variance is. It's within ten, but it's, we're not alone.
Okay, so that, that really needs to be clarified. Yeah. Because, because when they, when you look at the ten to, you know, the ten point three pupil to, to total teacher ratio, and then you look at the class sizes, it doesn't match, so it really would help to clarify that. The other thing is, you know, one of the things that the state has always said, and I, part of the reason I like the way in which you've narrowed down to our cohort, is because even though there are other districts that have equal numbers of students, they also, they may not have, and in some cases, it's true, they don't have a middle school. So, that's not a fair comparison, and that's what the state has always said, you should do across the board. So, I worry a little bit about going out of state, although I agree with Dexter, the money issue makes sense, because it's not a far commute from Maine to Portsmouth to somebody to work over in Elliott as opposed to here, because they might be paying more. But I worry about comparing us to other, other districts outside of the state. I'm not saying we shouldn't do it, but I'm not sure what you're going to be able to draw from that, if you look at those numbers, because there just might be too many questions and too many reasons not to understand what the comparison really is. The other thing is, I think, you know, this is going to be a great document for us to be able to begin to really, as Leslie said before, answer some of the same questions we're always asked by the city council. And, you know, I would think historically, if we consider this baseline, although we've had a number of documents in the past, some of which have also been excellent, but not quite to this extent, you know, then we'd be able to actually have a history of this information for the community. You know, because I know people in the past, especially during budget times, they've always accused the district of being, we're overstaffed, we spend too much money, we're heavy on administration. Well, here's an opportunity to look at the cohorts that we picked, that seems to make sense to be our cohorts, and then look at that kind of data as well. Not to say, you know, we're lower, just because we're lower, but now we have some information that's, you know, that's out there, that's real, that says we're not necessarily overstaffed. So, you know, I think the ability to begin to get that kind of comparative data besides just the, the budget numbers, I think that's really going to be very helpful. And I also wonder how many of these other cohorts in, districts in our cohort have a career tech center? I don't know if many do. There's only, I think, nineteen in the state, but, you know, so we have element, we have elementary, middle, high, and a career tech center built in, whereas some of these others don't. And, you know, we also have many incoming tuition students from the areas, many of these don't as well. But I would just want to say, I think, as everyone is, I just want to echo what everyone said, I think it's a great document. I think there could be a little bit more information over time that can be added. It's a wonderful place to begin, and I think it's a great public document for, for people. And I think it's, to me, it seems like right now that this is, this, this might just be the right cohort. You know, maybe you can find another district here or there, but this, this seems to be a fair example of people who would be, districts that would be comparable to us. So, yeah.
I just wanted to comment that I was, I was surprised by the free and reduced schedule, where we stood in that. I, I was surprised at how high some of the other districts were, that you wouldn't expect to be.
And the data, I shouldn't, it, it has increased, and we've gone up again. We're twenty-six percent as a district this year.
Oh, it's up to, wow.
Wow.
And I was also surprised at a really good attendance rate, because that's really, that's really excellent. And, and the small number of homeschool, that, that was very surprising. This is great.
It's Carol.
I ditto that, you know, this is a great start, and I think it's excellent. My other comment would just be a little bit along the lines of what Kent was saying. I think this is a little bit light on achievement, what Kent was saying. I'd like to see more about what are our kids doing? Are they going to Ivy League schools? Are they going to four-year colleges? Are they going into the military?
Right.
I mean, this, this is all very interesting information, but I don't really know, because that's really the question. The question is really, how are they doing? And if there's some way we can really tap into that, then, then we can make judgments as to whether we're getting value for our money.
Yeah, I agree.
That would be my comment.
Well, we have the list from graduation.
Sure.
I guess my thought was, I wasn't sure we were at the point in the conversation where you wanted to hear all of the things that we think are missing.
Yeah, I think that's, that's exactly where we are.
Okay.
You know, keep going. I guess that, just to continue off, again, we're hoping that Ed can walk away from this with, with clear feedback for what we would add or take away. So, yeah, roll that right in.
Well, in that case, I would, I would absolutely agree that that kind of data is important. I also think, if you, you know, if you would have put all of this across a very longer grid than you've been able to create on a small piece of paper, I understand that. You know, but I would be interested to see what other, the mobility rates of these other districts are as well. I would like to see what the SAT scores of these other districts are as well. I'd like to see what, how many administrators they have within that district. I think Kent's point earlier about having some sped data. How many, what's the percentage, percentage of coded students in, in these districts to see how we compare? I agree with Carol, you know, post-secondary enrollments, number of graduates, that whole kind of thing. I also think that, you know, I would like to, just, just at the high school level, for example, just to get a sense of, like, we have a particular kind of high school program. So, do any of these schools have an international baccalaureate program? You know, because it's, if, because that might be something that contributes to possibly a higher achievement level and a lower expenditure, because it's a different kind of an approach. So, that kind of thing, a number of AP courses that are offered, and also the percentage of money spent in each district on technology that goes into the classroom. And then, there's a bunch of qualitative data that's harder to, this is a silly statement, qualitative data that's harder to quantify. You know, but for example, I mean, we're struggling with it, with it ourselves in terms of, how is our technology organized in this, in the district? So, I'd be curious at some point, when you look at these other districts, how is their technology organized? How is, what kind of staffing levels do they have for that? You know, those kind of questions, because that's sort of an area we're moving into, so.
Yes, Kent?
I, I, I want to go back to, again, an end result, and I think we can do this with maybe George Christian and, and the SAU, is again, that number that goes off, and again, I know there's private schools that are below the eighth grade, but the majority of students that we lose that go to private school is that eighth grade going into their freshman year. And I think we could do, you know, finally partner up with a private school, maybe it's St. Thomas this time, and maybe, maybe it's two. And say, how well-prepared? And again, I would like to do this with SAU fifty and fifty-one, I think, how well-prepared were they when they went there? I mean, you know, Phillips Exeter is a little bit more of a challenge to get into than, than St. Thomas to a degree. And, and again, those are the products between our school systems that prepared a child. Because, again, we don't want to cut off our nose despite our face, by the time they get to the eighth grade, we've prepared students that go to some very prestigious private schools within this area. So, you know, that's, it'd be nice to know that number, because they were our responsibility. Thank you.
Okay.
Anything else? Before we get right? So, now, Ed will just reflect on some of the things that he'd like to, and then...
Fluctuate.
I'm facilitating the next workshop session. Oh, yeah. I have taken notes. First of all, I think this is your document, and admittedly, not knowing whether you would agree to the cohort, I stopped. I just didn't go any further until I got feedback. But I think the points about getting exit data is, you know, is absolutely right on the money. I think that's ultimately how we measure success. They come through our system, where do they go, et cetera. Had we gotten the grant that Principal Collins...
Had we gotten the grant that Principal Collins applied for, we would have joined, had dues paid to the National Clearinghouse. So, we can start that process. We certainly know intentionally what students are intending to do upon graduation, what percent are going to four-year, two-year, military, et cetera. We can pull that data, SAT data, that's all high school profile data we can, I can, that's easily done. So, that's good advice. In terms of the other pieces around sped, administrative staffing levels, looking at high school programs, I, we can, that's, all that data, I can come back and give you a second iteration. I'm happy to do that. The, you know, in terms of the purposes, and what this is, what this is intended to do, is just so we're not in a vacuum. I mean, you know, how are we doing is measured against people who are confronted with the same economic climate in the same region, and what's our performance? And, you know, so, the intent of the total teachers inter-staffing was just to suggest that we're not out of whack in any, if you take all professional staff measured into population of pupils, we're right there. We're not over, we're not under, you know. A part of this exercise, what I heard from board members when I first came on board was, you know, we don't know if the porridge is too hot or too cold or just right. And that's, and this gives you some other pieces of data to pull in to say, now, right. Well, and then you can look at performance and say, there's room to grow. There's room to move. And you can, and then you can, I think, somebody said about drilling down in particular areas to find out, you know, what is Governor Wentworth doing that makes them successful in meeting AYP and mathematics? You know, or, we can answer a lot of questions, I think, once we have a cohort done. So, I collected all of it, I won't go over all of it. I can look at the salary regionally in terms of the seacoast and go across the border in Maine. That's data I can get my hands on, and it's fine, and so.
Do you know somebody there?
A few, I know a few. So, I'll come back and present a second draft a little bit later, give us about a month's time, and we'll give you a second look at this. So, thanks for the feedback, it was good.
Okay.
Dexter, yes? So, you began to, just pick four examples as you began to drill a bit farther down. And I don't know if those are the right four or not, but it makes sense to begin to limit it as you get more information. But as you look at our cohort list, are there schools that either by reputation or by knowledge, not Oyster River, because we know they're in there for benchmarking purposes, but for our pure cohort group, are there, do we know that there are, just by reputation or by knowledge, that some really are examples that we really do want to really understand? Or not? I just throw out the question. Because at some point, and maybe it's Oyster River is the example, or maybe you pick an example for each, a different one for elementary school as high school, but if there are best-of-breed out there that we can get to, that fundamentally are operated in our environment, because, right or wrong, New Hampshire is still a different environment than Massachusetts or Connecticut. But if we can identify those, we really should really understand them. I mean, in business, what you do is you understand the best-of-breed, and you tear it apart, and you understand how they do it, what their processes are, what their cost structures are. You might not necessarily replicate them, but you want to understand them. And if we're really going to do this exercise to come out with, how do we want to improve ourselves? Do you find a cohort that has a middle school that we think is best-of-breed, and you compare it to our middle school? They may not do stuff as well as we do, they might do some stuff better than we do. And you do the same for a high school, and I think you do the same for an elementary school. Not this round, Ed, but I mean, at some point, you get there, if we're going to learn from this thing.
Yep.
So, that, I mean, that may be, you know, that may be something, that may be a 2012 exercise, that you assign, you assign people on your staff, Steve, you're going to become the expert in the high school for Oyster River, or whoever it is. Go find out everything about them, and you just give someone else in elementary school.
Sort of just, you know, because this is our budget work session. And one of the things is, is that we're now at the end of October. We've done two great sessions of trying to gather us on this. And I don't want to, I guess we're all hoping that we don't have another budget season like we always do. We get there, and we don't know what the city council may bless upon us. And I think, you know, a joint letter from the school board to the city council saying, we've been preparing, you know, information. We'd like to maybe pass these drafts along, or information, maybe not the whole thing. But I really hope that they'll give us a number much earlier, and not as the budget ends, and not as the budget has been passed, and then say, here's your number. I, you know, we can only work with that. And I've had discussion with a few city councils, and I've got to be quite honest, I was a little depressed, you know, that, you know, what the thought is out there. And I hope that that doesn't come to fruition. But, you know, here we are in October, which means November and December are our last two months that we won't be up to our eyeballs into budget discussion, and yet we never have that miracle number. And again, we were one point seven, I think I asked Steve from last, one point eight last year? One point eight-two last year. The feeling that I've already gotten from a couple is, we'd be lucky to see that, and I would hate that upon our students and on our public, especially where we're doing this pre-programming. And I think we need to share it early on with them, that we want information early on, too. We give them information early, maybe they'll give us, we can hope they'll give us something. This is an election year next year.
You know, so that kind of raises a question for me, one of the conversations I think over the next couple of meetings for us really is, so as we look, talk to the administration about help to, asking them to construct a budget, and this was a problem we had last year, not knowing what that number is, but we know what it costs roughly to remain level funding. So, how do we ask them to construct the budget? Do we say, we want you to, not level funding, I mean, level services, we know what that costs? Do we do what we did last year, which is, that's what we know what it costs, and we'd like to see that budget, or do we say, well, let's go there? What did you say, the September, the?
One point eight-two.
So, do we end up, you know, suggesting those kind of numbers? And at the same time, I think, you know, this is just my personal feeling here, you know, the administration is putting together some, and we'll talk some more about it, a strategic plan as to how to move forward to help improve achievement, through best practices, through professional learning communities. Given the budget that we have, they're trying to implement that whole new strategy and move it forward. And at the same time, that they're trying to implement the strategy, we're trying to think about, well, can you do that if we cut a million dollars out of your budget? You know, how do you implement your strategy at the same time that you're asking them to cut? And within that environment, how do you construct the budget? So, that's really the difficult situation we have coming up. Because they're not going to give us a number ahead of time.
I think we should, I agree. I think we have a budget, but we don't own a budget.
We don't own the budget, exactly.
We don't own the budget. But we have, we do own the programming and the services of the schools. So, we need to do what we see those practices are.
I agree.
And say, this is it, and this is the cost of it, guys. If you want to eliminate it, that comes on your shoulders.
Well, then it's incumbent upon us to do as best a job as we can to sell it to the community, to say that this is a reasonable, whatever it ends up being, that this is a reasonable budget, and we have a plan in place, and, you know, the superintendent has put it forward, and, you know, we'll hold them accountable. So, I mean, it's tough. I know it's tough. Anyway, Stephen.
So, I was just going to say, it's a kind of a nice, we set up the workshop in sort of part, it's kind of a nice segue into the article reading in your packet on effective resource strategies. I know Ed was going to go over the overview of some of the work around that, and-
Well, this is just, again, I think another data point, I think it's just another way for the board to feel some level of comfort around, how do we budget, and are we appropriately resourced, inappropriately resourced, et cetera? And so, this chapter six, you read about the three key strategies that are critical for schools, and Linda shared an article with me this evening that's right on point that I'll share with you at our next meeting. But when we talk about school-level programs and educational strategies that research shows clearly impact positively student learning, I created a list from that article. These are the mind notes around that, and it's all DK, it's smaller class sizes with a goal of fifteen in grades K to three. You know, folks get nervous about, what are we talking? When we talk about the instructional core, you will see that in this article, they talk about art, music, physical education. These pieces are all part of the core in sustaining those, providing teachers the daily planning time, added PD days. But the areas we're looking at closely in terms of reallocation of resource is items six, seven, and eight. I.e., you know, it's fine to put teachers in PLC groups, send them outside, but one of the things we know is, the job embedded professional development is the way to go. To have a trusted colleague, somebody that's respected, help you implement that curriculum. I.e., you can call it a coach, a facilitator, an expert in the content area, that's an area that that article suggests needs to be in place. When you look at extensive use of formative assessment, you saw some illustration tonight with the little devices, et cetera, but that's critical, and that's the good work that this district's been engaged in for two or three years under Mr. Zadovick's leadership. And then, the other piece is finding that extra time to provide students more one-on-one tutoring, extended day, in other words, taking the school day vertically and also expanding it horizontally. And we're working on creating a more collaborative professional school culture. So, these are just resource guidelines, and, you know, it gives you a framework under adequacy to look at, how are we staffed? And this is adequacy. This isn't the Cadillac. This is just meaning, you know, theoretically, what's required to deliver state standards to one-hundred percent of students. And so, they give you that prototypical school, much, it's within thirty-five or forty pupils of Little Harbor to see how they're staffed. And you can use that ratio there and do the math. I've done the math, and quite frankly, the full staffing levels, classroom, there'd be a couple more, but reallocating resource, where Little Harbor is staffed at the same levels this adequacy guideline would suggest. You might reallocate some resource a little bit differently to get your instructional coach to structure some extended learning time, to provide a robust summer school program, but the staffing's pretty close. We've done the similar thing with the middle school and high school, and we're a little bit higher at the middle school, but quite frankly, I think it's no surprise to the board that we run a strong unified arts program that's been part of the planning for the middle school construction, et cetera. And I think CTE drives the high school up a little bit higher. But, you know, I've done that, I didn't want to confuse you with a lot of data, and I can share that with you, and how this prototypical adequacy level of funding matches up with our current schools. But I think it's important, again, that the school board have some firm, your legs underneath you when you're confronted in the community about myths and misperceptions about where we are as a district. And so, this is aligned with best practice, it's twenty-eight states across the nation and how they've looked at this. And so, I don't, I'll be happy to answer any questions, I didn't, I know it's getting late, but I think this is another framework to help the board make sense of the task ahead.
Dexter?
So, did you say you did that not just for staffing levels, but also for the costs on this list as well?
Well, no, I didn't, yeah, I didn't, I just did it in terms of resource, resource levels, Dexter, right.
That would be another terrific window and benchmark to go through that for all the schools, for all the costs, because again, it gives us a sense of, is it too hot, is it too cold?
Right, yeah, absolutely.
Is it just right? Of, along these dimensions. And so, that's, this is terrific to have this data.
And so, as we talk to principals and they start to develop their budget, the conversation we're having, okay, is how are we going to, within the existing framework, i.e. in a revenue-neutral way, look at items six, seven, and eight? What are we doing to capitalize on that and get aligned with that? And people are being responsive. I mean, there's a lot of thought going on, but-
So, you're saying to stay within current resource levels, how can you make that happen?
Exactly right.
Move things around, change.
And not change the, you know, turn it on its head immediately, but what, you know-
No, no, move in that direction.
Exactly. I think we're off the protocol.
Off the protocol now, just let it rip.
Deal with Mitch.
We'll have to follow Dr. Z's. We're into section two.
This, you know, this delves into a broader discussion, because, you know, as we take a look at all the work that's been done on the comparative metric piece, you know, this really suddenly says, if we have more time and we're looking inward, and we decide to really take a look, and let's just say, whatever the budget comes out, the point is, is that we're going to have a finite amount of money. And if we look at things on a per-pupil basis, you know, the really, you know, the idea is, you know, one is we're able to look at things in relative magnitude, you know, we're boiling things down to, you know, it only costs us two dollars per child to deliver this. Well, that's not so bad, you know, or we need to cut two dollars off of this program to deliver it. You know, per unit cost of various services will allow us to identify, I think Dexter was going to say, out-of-whack spending on a, you know, well, we can deliver it in second grade over here, but in this school, we're, it's much higher. Why? You know, what are the inconsistencies? You know, and also looking at performance, you know, things of that nature. And probably most importantly, I think this year is going to be a matter of saying, if we know what the cost is, you know, we will then have the tool to evaluate trade-offs. You know, I really want this one versus this one. This is more important. You know, we need to affect achievement level in reading, so I would rather take the resource over here and spend it over here. And if we have that metric, then I think we have the ability to have the discussion, to be able to sit there and say, you know what? Math is more important than X. And I won't say what it is, because, you know, it's, you know, for us to decide, but, you know, and then also just, you know, it allows the budgetary process to become a little bit more controlled, because then we're talking tangible numbers and we're not talking these, you know, expansive numbers. We're talking about, you know, incrementally down to, you know, X number of dollars per student we're going to increase. And so, you know, I don't think we're there at that level yet, but, you know, you mentioned things like, you know, let's take a look at, you know, administrative staff, you know, are we, you know, sized correctly at some of our cohorts? And looking at, you know, achievement level, and looking at, you know, math specialists and reading specialists, because, you know, there's a lot of things that are out there that maybe are going to, you know, crack that window into seeing what someone else is doing that maybe we could be doing differently. But I think, you know, the first step is, is maybe looking departmentally, and then maybe trying to take a look at something that, you know, would enable us to make a better decision, because we'll know what that incremental cost could be. I know that's a mouthful, but, you know, I just think this is a great direction that we're moving in, and it's only going to enable us to make better decisions, because we'll be able to actually talk about the issue at hand, and understand the trade-offs.
I think this is basically what we've already done to some extent, you're going to that, you know, improving resource, whereas, because when we added the half reading at Little Harbor at that particular grade level, because of the large number of students, that was, that was what needed to be done. You know, it was larger class numbers than we should have, and we were doing the same thing previously at John Darrow when there was a large, a large cohort of kids. So, it's kind of what we're trying to do and have, but we're just starting.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. But this is now more metric, you know?
Exactly.
You got something that's going to factually base it and say, you know, I mean, so the conversation could also go to say, if we're going to spend X amount of money on the track club, and we're going to, and it's going to be two thousand dollars per pupil to do this one thing, to, you know, refinish the track, and you could say, we could do something else, it's only going to be twelve dollars, you know, maybe you sit there and say, you know what? We can't afford two thousand dollars per, you know, because we only have forty kids in the track team, you know, to do that kind of an upgrade, we'd rather spend it over here. So, I, you know, I'm with you.
Dexter?
The only thing we have to make is, when we're looking at the cost numbers, not so much the staffing numbers, just make sure that the costs are, reflect two thousand and ten costs. And I'm not sure, I mean, some of, I don't know what the source of this is and how recent the data is, but we don't want to, we don't want to misrepresent it.
Right.
Want to make sure we're comparing apples to apples.
That's right.
I know you'll, and you'll do that, but.
Ed, you don't need to comment on this tonight, but at some point, I'd like to know more about this idea of extending the school day, you know, where that's coming from, what the research is that's behind that idea, and how much that would cost us? Would it cost us anything to extend the day? What would be the implications with the union? You know, all the different issues surrounding extending the day. And I still think that if we're going to look into extending the day, that we need to look at starting the day at the time that's most developmentally appropriate for all our students, because we know the data is there that our middle school students and our high school students would be achieving at a greater level if they were starting school at an appropriate time. So, I think it's great to look into extending the day, but I think you should also be considering when you start the day. And we know that won't cost us money. So, we know it'll increase achievement, and- So if we know it'll, it'll increase achievement and it won't cost us any money, I, I think it's really important to look at that as well as extending the day.
Do you want me to respond?
If you want it tonight or if another time you want to talk to us more about the, just the extending the day.
So this chapter is, is hitting what is evidence-based effective strategies and what high-performing schools are currently doing. And, and so on a national scale, folks are looking at ways to extend the day, you know, more time with content, you know? Everything brought into a six-hour instructional day and more things crammed into with that six-hour framework, it just can't hold, it can't sustain it any longer. And so some districts are running a fifth block at a high school, let's say, or they're going to 4:30 or 5:00 and offering those students who, who are in tier one instruction in mathematics, getting that extra help that they need just in time after school. And it, and it's a setup in a, in a way. So when you look at how they allocate resource on that model, they probably are dedicating, you know, one and a half, two teachers to make that happen. And, you know, and it's, it's everybody coming to work at 7:30 and leaving at 4:00, 4:30, 5:00. If you could stagger staff in a revenue neutral way and have people work 10 to 5:00 to provide that, you know, i.e. specialists who can provide that, the, the most effective intervention out there is one-to-one tutoring for any child. And to provide that opportunity is, is what we need to be thinking about. If we just keep doing business within that six-hour framework, I don't think we're going to change our results much. That's my guess. It's a guess.
Thank you. Rebecca.
Along the same, similar vein, could we also look at block scheduling at the high school and if perhaps that's, we can change that to have a more effective learning? Because that would be completely cost.
I was struck by that article though, that they referenced in the, in the most effective secondary school, a 90-minute block schedule. In the document, you know, the article we read this evening. That struck me. I, I was surprised.
Yeah. But maybe we need to restructure so it's only 90-minute blocks and not the skinny block and maybe trimesters instead of quarters or other ways of rearranging it.
Well, I think, I think we need to, you know, I think the skinny block is a way to flexibly look at what the needs of students are in some instances and provide them, you know, content all year long in a core area. But I think we have to be open to looking at, you know, other ways to hit those 20%, 25% who aren't proficient. We have to find other ways.
I was just wondering about the 90-minute block. I don't even think it's so much as switching it to like a regular like six, like 45 minutes have longer classes, it's necessarily setting up how the 90 minutes is necessarily used? Because I find in some classes, the 90 minutes is necessary and I get a lot done and then in other 90-minute classes, I'm like, I'm not productive. So I feel like if we, it can be fixed if the 90 minutes is used effectively.
That's a great point.
I was just going to comment when Carol was asking about the, the school start time. I have an email from the superintendent of schools in Oyster River. Interestingly enough, I've not responded to it yet. It just arrived yesterday. He's, he is looking into school start time and he had been given my name as somebody who's been involved in it. And he asked if he could call me and if he could exchange ideas. I thought I'd pick his brain about some other things as well, since this is a cohort that I think we need to go after. So I think I'll get one of those folders from your office for him.
So, yeah.
No, that's, I mean, I, the only other document that you have in your materials is Mr. Bartlett has updated kind of a very preliminary look at the budget and.
Right. And so, so these numbers sort of tell us that if everything stayed exactly the same, it would cost $1.8 million. That's what these numbers are.
Status quo.
Right. So could I ask about the administration and the board? What kind of advice and how do we want to move, do we give the administration in terms of creating a budget for us, because the budget season's coming up? So what do we, you know, we want to think about, what do we want to actually ask them to do? Do we want to give them a target number? Do we want to just, you know, have, yeah, I'm, I'm sort of at a loss myself. Yes, Dexter.
So, I mean, we know the environment, we know better than this year from a, from a budget process, that conceivably could be worse. So Mitch, I think you suggested we at least give them a, a steady state target. If we were to deliver the same program and the same services for the next fiscal year, what would that cost? And that, that may be reflected in this very preliminary budget, I don't know. But then realistically, I think we need to give them a 0% increase target and, and ask them to identify how they might get there. And I guess I would, I would ask when they look at that, that they look at creative things that might not, I mean, obviously one way to get there is you cut program. And, and that may be, in fact, the, the need, but there may be other, other actions that would, would, would be recommended that don't cut program, still allow us to deliver the same level of products and services and we identify those. And I think we get that fairly early, because some of those, some of those non-programmed stuff may have a longer lead time. And one of the things we ran into in this year's budget process is that in March, we were beginning to open those items up. And, and it was a little bit in some ways too late to sit down and really understand how best to approach them. So we may need to be much earlier and to give us a little bit longer runway to get at some of those more, more difficult items. I, I just, I, I'm convinced we're not, we, we won't see this number on this preliminary budget, proposed budget. I don't think we're getting it. I think we're, I think we get a plan on zero increase.
Kent.
And my two fellow board members that are on the efficiency, we're, we're going to meet at least this one more time this coming Thursday. And I don't think I've been overly satisfied and we've had a lot of philosophical discussion, but if we are going to end up equal to or less than what we have had last year, I, I think we, we have to be, and I'm going to, I can talk to the other two, both, both of them and say, look, there are a couple of things we need to start to ask to move if that's, if that's in fact on the efficiency committee, to say, you know, if, if we're going to have this cut, we can't any longer support, or we need to start to throw it back over to the city side, whether it be, you know, the athletic fields, whether it be custodians, whether it be maintenance, to do any, we can't keep walking into the same damn wall and think we're going to get around it. It's not going to happen. The wall gets thicker every year instead of easier. And, you know, again, we've had some great discussions on the efficiency committee, but I haven't seen, and I don't know whether Rebecca and Carol would disagree, I, I haven't seen progress within that group. And, and again, I think it's because nobody wants to sort of pull the trigger, but we have, they're, they're our friends, they're our colleagues within, within the political realm of, of the city. But, you know, if we're looking at something like this, we need to say, these are the programs we need to put in your lap, because otherwise education starts to have a hurt. And that's why we developed this committee. This committee was developed to say, how do we shift that burden? And it is a burden, whether we have it or the city has it, the number, the cost of it really doesn't go away. But maybe they can do it more effectively and that was the idea of that. And again, I think that's the discussion we need to really have on Thursday morning and I'm hoping I can be there, because we can't do it. Interesting. Again, if they disagree, that's fine. I mean, maybe they saw something. I, I missed one meeting and maybe they've seen better results than what I, I feel we've got going on that group.
No, I would, I would agree with what you said, Kent.
So you, so, so you think that there are things that could actually save money?
It, it wouldn't affect the overall city budget within the first year possibly. It could, but it definitely would shift ownership to where it might be more properly housed.
Okay.
But in the long run, I believe it can save, we have three examples. We have athletics and the city rec department. We have our legal department and we have personnel. Those are things that were once housed all internally with the school system. We share those resources and we've reduced the overhead and the cost. We, we no longer have two personnel people. We have one person at city hall that works with the unions and that's worked well. Same with the athletics. The legal was, was kind of all disjointed and we now have one versus a team that we used to have to pay for. Definitely on the legal, I believe we, we've, we've saved. Nobody, talk about Good Matrix, have we seen, what is that savings over a three, five, 10 and 12? Because some of the legal has been, well, actually, human resources has been over 16 years. It was prior to my coming onto the board. They moved it, I think, just about the time I came onto the board. And that was housed. So, you know, what is the next one? What's the most logical one that would, again, have some cost savings so that we don't have to look at this? This number's not healthy.
Tom?
It's also that time of the year where I think, you know, one of the challenges that we're going to have if we started off in the budget season is really taking a look at some of the bigger nuts. And I think starting a conversation with the teachers that could have enough time to create a dialogue that we could talk about healthcare. I mean, that's a, a huge number this year and, and there might be some creative solutions that could be done if there's enough time to talk through it with the teachers. The same thing goes for, I mean, the, the salaries are a big number and there's a, a contract in place. But I think, you know, the, the biggest thing that's against us is not having enough time to actually have the right discussion. And, you know, specifically around healthcare and dental, those types of benefits, I think there's some creative solutions out there that could deliver the same benefit to the teacher, knowing full well that there are people who have different requirements. And, you know, being able to be flexible enough to offer people the right plan that gives us the flexibility to, to save money as well as have the teacher save money, I think it's a, it's an opportune time to, and I would ask the administration to consider starting a conversation.
Yeah. I guess I should ask Steve, this number that you have for the health insurance is 9.56. Is that the number that's coming from city hall that's just an overall or is that the actual amount that it's going up? What do we know?
Let me take two minutes to explain what you got in front of and maybe that'll help some of the questions, if I may. What I did was just try to update the very, very preliminary big chunk, I get it right this time, Ed, budget that Ed had put together, with some of the things that I knew and then point out some of the things that we don't know. So in terms of salaries, what we did was we took existing and we just did step and cola without changing the cola, because I don't know what the cola will be, because we don't get that number until December 10th.
But it's the rolling.
It's the rolling cola, right. So I, so I don't know what the rolling cold is going to be, because it's going to change when the number's commodity's number 10th. So I left it essentially the same. That would move up such things as retirement and FICA, FICA's in your other benefits. However, for the retirement, we know that's going up anyways. That's, I mean, we're already sure of that, because we've got printouts from the retirement system. And if I can get to the meeting on Thursday morning, I'll hear exactly if they've had any changes, you know, in Concord. But what's posted on their website is that the rates, not the amounts, but the rates that employers, school district is going to pay for teachers, will go up 13%. The rate that the school district pays for all other staff will go up 21%. So I've taken those rates and applied them to the adjusted stagnant colored number, okay? So we know that this won't be the number, but it's all I had to work with. To answer your question about health insurance, if I take the announced rate and, and I asked human resources in the city, what's the 10-year average? Because that's generally what we get adjusted to. The 10-year average is 9.56. So I adjusted last year's numbers by 9.56 as a guideline. Dental insurance, we've already been told is four and a half percent. I adjusted this year's number by four and a half percent. That also could be affected by usage, by the way, but in other words, but that's just straight. Leave it termination, I left straight. Workers comp, I haven't, I do not have a number, so I just took last year's increase and used it for next year. Or this year's increase and used it for next year, excuse me. Life and disability, I level funded for the simple reason that we've changed our disability insurance carrier and we have some savings and the life insurance is going to go down a little bit on the rate. So even though the salaries in theory would go up, I believe there's enough in there that I can leave at level, at least at this viewpoint, at this point in time. Unemployment, I bumped up because it has been going up, so I tried to adjust by actual. The other numbers, I just took using Ed's methodology of object code as opposed to cost center chunking and just tried to adjust them as best we could, but there's, there's no, they're pretty much level this year with the exception of transportation. And I just threw a number in there because we have to go out, because our contract ends. Okay? So other than that, that's all, that's all I've done.
Okay, so I was asking that because we had an original number for the insurance that was higher.
That's higher than that. Correct.
Then we were adjusted down and we got another little chunk of money back.
Right. So they took, so if they go the 10-year average, that's probably what it'll be. If they decide that the stabilization fund is in better shape and, and, and the manager decides to make an adjustment, then we'll, they'll make the adjustment. But, and, and none of these are guaranteed numbers. These are just information as best I could have, because what I wanted to do was show you the big chunks as Ed had already presented, but try to adjust them by what we sort of know and what we do know. And so if you look at that total, obviously it's not a very attractive total. And we know it won't exactly be that, but it's to get the conversation started.
Thank you.
Okay?
Just follow up a little bit from what Tom and now to tie it in with Steve with the 10-year average. You know, we, we, we go into good faith and we do five-year contracts, which, you know, has been a benefit for us doing budget planning, because we have an idea other than these numbers that keep seeming to sprout legs. So I, I don't know if it's possible, I, I directed towards Steve Bartlett, is if there is a way to prorate savings of a, of a five-year contract versus, and again, we have had a five-year contract for three terms in a row, so that gives us kind of a 15-year outlook on it. I think that we would see some type of cost savings to that and maybe not. Maybe there's a disadvantage to it, because I know, you know, others have said, well, you might be able to negotiate lower and that may have some fact to it. But on the other hand, budgetarily wise, you know what that set amount is, because especially now that we do the five-year average rolling color, is it? 10-year, I'm sorry, 10-year average rolling color, you have that set amount that you, that's kind of a fixed amount, correct? No?
No, I mean, that's the, by definition, the 10-year rolling color, it takes 10 years in chunks. One drops off and one gets added on, so.
Yeah.
I mean, unless your crystal ball's better than mine.
No, no, but you're, but you're only missing, if you have the 10 years, what I'm saying is.
Well, you know, I, I will grant you that probably the swing.
Okay.
Is probably much.
That's what I'm getting at.
Which is, which is why I did what I did, because.
Right.
The swing is going to be lower, so I'm.
But again, when we initiated five-year contracts, the first in the city, has that been an advantage? I mean, there may not be. My feeling is there are some advantages, there are more advantages and there may be disadvantages. And if that's wrong, then we need to sort of have that discussion. Is that, is that the pathway we want to follow in the future? Because does it, does it hurt us budgetarily?
So, so I understand what you're asking is if you looked at the 10-year rolling color over the last 15 years and what that target is versus what the actual annual CPI is.
I might have been.
But then if we had year-to-year type contracts, we, we might not be as well off.
I get, I get you.
By every two years.
But that mandate comes from city hall.
Correct.
That's not, I think it's.
No.
Yeah, John.
John Mohankel mandates that five-year contract, because the first time, we had three years and the extension.
Oh, that's absolutely true.
No, he didn't, he doesn't mandate the five-year contract.
Well, yes, he does. That's what the negotiations were told. Tom Fliger came and said. Tom Fliger came and said it's a five-year.
Preferred. It was the preferred.
It was strongly preferred.
Yes, oh, no, I like that.
It wasn't like choice. It wasn't like we could choose A or B.
No, that's not true. The school board, we'd had this conversation, the school board had the ability to decide who wanted to do a three-year contract. Why do you laugh?
My perception is not that. So, that's okay, because you perceive what you perceive, and I perceive what I perceive.
Well, I was in the meetings. We had our conversations.
Well, I know, but I was in charge of that meeting, too, so I didn't perceive...
I'm just telling you that the city manager does not mandate that we have a five-year contract.
That's not my understanding, but we can agree to disagree.
But that's where we are. We're at, now we have a 15-year database.
Right.
We should be able to say, is this the pathway we wish to continue?
Right. And this is the only one you have a rolling COLA on, though. The others have bad.
That's true.
At the Boston...
But we can look at 15 years.
You can look at that.
There were a lot of surmise.
It's a lot of surmising.
Okay. Got enough information?
Well, so, what I understood it to be is, get the real numbers on the budget as it is, and level fund, and show us at zero.
Yes.
That's what I heard. Okay.
Okay.
Sad, but true.
Okay, so, we have one more item on the agenda, and I think I'll turn it over to Dexter, since he's so...
I'll be brief on updating the committee on the building. We're in the design development stage. Last meeting, we received initial estimates based on design development. Tomorrow evening, the committee's meeting again to go through a value management process. In the interim, a subgroup of committee members and city staff have gone through and identified a list of potential, what, in the building business, referred to as a value management process, effectively identifies potential cost savings or cost avoidance. The estimates are higher now than our budget for the middle school. Not unusual, as you go through this phase of the process. I think tomorrow night, we hope we'll come out of that meeting with identified items that will potentially reduce costs on the project. We believe strongly we can do that without affecting any of the program that's going to be delivered by the middle school. And as you all know, the reality is that until you actually get out to bid, you don't know what your costs really are. And we're still on track for having the construction documents completed and the bids going out in January of next year. And when those bids come back, and as contractors and providers begin to respond to those bids, then there'll be a final negotiation process, if you will, to get to the ultimate cost for the project. We had a pre-meeting today with Gilbane and our architect, J C J. And I think what I'd characterize is that there's confidence that, in fact, this process will get us to the proper cost in budget and delivering the program that we've committed to. And that's sort of the major headline. Unless, there's other things to report out. I mean, the Grand Street Field still goes on, the building's down. One other thing, I guess I will publicly comment on, is we did have a meeting with various people in the community, people representing, people that are from the Wentworth School area, who went to Wentworth School, and historians in the city. And the intent of that meeting was to understand what potentially mitigation efforts we should take to make sure that we capture the history of both the Wentworth School, as well as the portions of the middle school that will be eliminated through the renovation process. And that's under the direction of the New Hampshire Department of Historic Resources, right? So, we're working in...
And EPA.
In the, and EPA, which bizarrely has the final sign-off on this.
Big crowd.
And then, we had a crowd of probably 15 people. A lot of people that actually went to that school and have a lot of memorabilia that they're going to turn over to us. And so, there's some interesting ideas. I would say that the ideas have, had a broad range, and I think that what we'll be tasked, which is to figure out how to boil those down, and to deliver something within the school program that makes sense and is cost-effective. But we got some good input. So, that was an important thing that I wanted to share with you.
Did they find a contract?
No. It was never, they never found it, so it was never, it was, I mean, we think it was never buried, right? I mean, they were pretty diligent.
The concept to look for was based on something, I think we did one, but I'm not sure.
It was over there.
Right. So, we didn't want to take the chance. So, trust me, that, because we're doing, we did all the recycling, all the materials and stuff, it was well viewed.
We sifted it out.
Yeah. They looked for it, and it was well sifted.
Dexter, has the discussion, as, you know, one of the first phases will be, the Wentworth Fields will be done next year.
Right.
Ownership and cost, as we talk about budgets all the time, that will fall on the city side? Is that clarified at this point?
Yeah.
Even though they will be used for, will have preferential for high school and middle school softball?
The rec department owns the operation of that field once it's completed. And you're right, will have preference, but it'll be used for other things, and the rec department will be responsible for managing it and operating it. Thank you.
I have a problem, not about this, I have a question about something else.
Anything else about the babysitting? Okay, so, before we adjourn.
I was wondering what happened to safety groups to school? Walk to school day and all that?
Oh, yes. I need, the mayor needs to appoint people, and I've asked him to, for the committee. The rep from traffic and safety moved out of town and resigned from traffic and safety, therefore resigned from the committee. And so, that is a mayor-appointed position, and there are a couple others. And then, we don't have our city staff person anymore, and that is something that city manager has to choose to give us that resource back or not. And if not, then the committee is going to be very, very different. Because I don't know how to write a grant, I don't know how to apply to the EPA for things, so it's, we just haven't been able to connect to get, get ready backup.
Is the money all spent?
No. No, there's still projects that are being...
So, it's just, because that was not 90,000?
Yeah, no, the things that were, that we got the grant money for are being implemented, you know, as fast as public works can do it.
Okay. Motion to adjourn?
All in favor?
Aye.
Second the motion.
Let's do it.[1086.32]